Welcome, everyone. It is five fifteen on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty. And the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please note everyone's attendance. Our first item this evening is the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes of the December twenty-third meeting, approval of bills and claims. We have no licenses and permits this evening. We have one appointment to the council, Shelly Daniel, for the planning zoning commission. If there are any questions with regards to the consent agenda, otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Steven, you have space? Yes. Lester?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is oral requests and communications from the audience, and we have one. Wes King. Chico, you wanna come up, please? Please, it doesn't matter either one you wanna use. Yeah, just come right up here to the microphone there and give us your name.
Uh, Chico Candy and uh, all of them all in the restroom and stuff downtown. Uh, we made a pack of stuff for around the maybe about a year.
Yeah, if you want.
Any questions or something?
There you go.
There's a letter in from top for you here.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Dunner?
No, go ahead.
Well, appreciate the time and uh, you've given us talk about this. We'd like to visit, see if we can get the city involved in the downtown restroom, which is at this point uh, an issue. Number one of getting people funded. And so look through that packet and tell you what the expenses are. And what we really are asking for, we got some other people who want to speak, but we really need about three hundred dollars a month for your cleaning and soap and everything that's involved in that. And and the water issue. That's in the city that they throw in the water bill. So uh, Janine here has been, they have no money to clean us and she's been doing that herself for months. I don't blame her, she's tired of doing that. She's been paying for toilet paper and whatever stuff out of her own pocket. She has some money and does it, and I have some money to do this thing. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Any other questions? Anybody else want to speak or?
Did you want me to say something?
No, go ahead and come forward too. Just gotta give us your name.
My name is Laura Camino. I own Artwork Studio and I am on a building on Adam Street. I'm not in the mall, but I am a downtown merchant and I moved on to Adam Street in twenty fifteen, apart that I was located off the main uh, shopping strip. And when I moved in, not not twenty fifteen, but the next year, I got a letter from uh, the from Janine asking for money for the downtown restrooms and I was like, sure, absolutely, even though I have two restrooms in my building and I let people use them because I teach classes. I have a lot of kids in there. And so it's an amenity for my my people, but if somebody walked in and said, hey, can I use your restroom? You know, absolutely. It's just something that I offer. I I believe firmly that the downtown in the mall, that that restroom is an amenity that leaves a positive just a positive thing for downtown Carroll as opposed to shutting it down, which is where we're at right now. Oh, for the for over a year, one of the sinks in the women's restroom has not been working. And it's gonna cost two hundred dollars to fix it and we haven't fixed it because we don't have the funds. Ron Miners, Janine's husband, does all the repairs. Anything that goes wrong in those two restrooms, he takes care of it and he doesn't get any compensation at all. At this time, Janine has over three hundred dollars out of pocket on her own of supplies. And and that's wrong too. And and I I noticed that, you know, every year that the merchants are, there's fewer and fewer donating to this cause, but you know, um, we don't know what else to do. Just short of shutting the doors on it, which I think would be terrible because people come to downtown or they they decide to go to Tasty's to get their hair done and they're like, why don't we go downtown and shop? And you know, they get down here, it's like, oh, there's no restroom, you know, where am I supposed to go? Not everybody wants people in their restrooms in their stores because first of all, some of them are really scary. Some of them don't work. The girls at the Buckle, they use the mall restroom because their restroom is, their building is so old and their restroom is so bad that, you know, they don't want anybody in there, not even themselves. Uh, a lot of the other people's restrooms in their stores are tucked away back in their store rooms or or by their in their office and you have to go past, you know, merchandise, personal property, things like that. So you know, we're we're yes, please use the restroom because I don't wanna lose a customer, but at the same time, please don't steal from me. I believe people are inherently good, but you know, if it's right there, who's to say that they wouldn't? So basically, we are out of money and we don't know what else to do. We do pay a cleaning service to come in five days a week. Um, three hundred dollars out of Orbot. And when we were getting short on funds, they knocked it down to two hundred. They said until you can build that back up again. Uh, we've tried to get on the uh, the New Hope Village, getting getting them to come in and do it, but they don't have any crews available because that would save us some money, but you know, we we've exhausted everything. Any questions?
Who owns this?
Who owns it? The mall is owned by...
I I own the restroom.
He owns the the space for the restroom.
Space for the restroom.
I know we, you know, this I this was, I think, you in fact, when I was on the council and we voted to spend money to build the restrooms, came about with city funds. I guess I thought it was understanding. Then that the mall association would then take care of the rest of it. There's supposed to be a committee set up. And I don't know if they've ever met.
Have you noticed how much smaller the mall has gotten? That that makes a difference too. The empty storefronts. There's four empty storefronts in there. So you know, that's that's revenue that can't go into this. I'm not even a member. I don't own anything in the mall and I am supporting this restroom. And there's a list of, there's so many other businesses that are not, don't belong to the mall, I mean, we don't own anything in the mall, but...
I guess what I'm getting at, Laura, is the fact that when we did this, there was something that was set up and discussed at the time that was supposed to take care of all that uh, at that time. Now, I don't know where it's gone since then because the city was involved in just building it. And as far as maintenance, that was not part of the city. It was to build it. If you wanna come forward again, Chico, if you can.
Uh, you're you're right on that and that's how it started out, but that hasn't panned out very well, as you can see.
Sure.
So it's all this changed. So and you know, I own it, I own it, pay the taxes, insurance on it and whatever, and wanting to do that, but I know it's an issue that somebody said, well, it's private, we shouldn't, city shouldn't do that. Well, the other thing is, I'd deed it to the city if you guys want it. I'd give it to you.
And it's not just shoppers who are using this restroom.
Sure.
There are there are people who go for walks and stuff. Um, there's a note here from Cindy Durkerson from Coach. She's there first thing in the morning.
Yeah, it was a pretty...
And she has seen people park in the parking lot. I still call it Sernette's Parking Lot. Park in Sernette's Parking Lot, walk into the mall, go down, use the restroom, wash their hands and go right back out again to their park because they knew that there was a public restroom there. So it's it's not just our shoppers. Although I wish they were all shoppers.
And I agree with how that started. The city put in fifty grand when we did that. The motoring was good, they put in five grand.
Yeah, that was a rubber club with doing some stuff.
Yeah, they... Yeah, so then the other went on, but got to the point, I went and you can see uh, I went to every bank, every year they'd say, well, I'm not gonna come here again. And they see me come, they run. And they've been pretty good, but they just, you know, every one in the in the banking business or people like every bank said, well, where is the city at? That's why we're here.
Sure.
So anyhow, we're asking for your help.
I'll I'll get the documents, all that stuff that was that we had when we originally had discussed all that. I'll get that all brought up. And I'll talk with Mike and we'll get it out to the council and then get figure something out from there.
Yeah, and I didn't think that like, in the taxes, like, if you got any questions, I can answer.
How many different people own property in the mall, you know? You don't own the whole thing. So do you have any idea how many different owners are in the west?
Is it that many?
How many?
I wouldn't think there's nine.
Probably five or six.
Well, one, two, three. No, I I'd say, yeah, six.
In the mall?
Yeah, in the mall. Property owners.
Problem is, everybody on the outside of the mall don't think they need to pay anything for the restrooms and it's kind of a burden on everybody. And like we said, we've got five, four or five storefronts empty now. Who knows, it's gonna get worse.
And then the other thing, Eric, that you brought up was about the mall associations, you know, but every month mall, so the property owners pay the heat, light, water and everything for and the cleaning, the music. Every mall owner pays that. That's a, that depends on every owner because divided up by who owns by the square foot, you know? Like this, the quite a burn also, you know? Maintenance, painting, whatever we got, we got all that stuff to maintain it, eight or ten foot space.
Do you have other people from outside the mall that are part of your plan though? That you said they're not all, but some of them are participating? How many? And how much money are you bringing in?
Well, we're asking, we need what...
So you're participating, but you're not paying for it? I I'm confused.
We went out and Janine sent all the members, merchants downtown to the, if they would donate. That started out fairly good, but it just fills them away now and it's, you know, and it's...
So nobody's donating?
Yeah, we send them, then we get no money, you know, no book.
Yeah, every year, every year we get a letter. Those of us who are different businesses.
The letters in there, you know?
Yeah, there's probably a letter and it says, downtown restrooms are very important. We need two hundred and forty dollars from you to help maintain it for a year. And I think some of the businesses that contributed in twenty fifteen thought that it was a one-time deal, but over time, that has gotten less and less. Um...
Yeah, unless you put the money in a interest-bearing account, that money's what's going to pay the bills, it's gonna be gone.
Yes, it just, it just, it don't all come in. It just, it just got to the point, it just...
So for twenty eighteen, Commercial Savings Bank, United Bank of Iowa Savings Bank, True Value is a mall member, Available Bank, Touch a Country is a mall member, Clix, they don't, do they consider them all? No.
Yeah.
Yes, they're an owner? Okay. Buckle is not an owner. I'm not an owner. Janine is an owner.
Yeah.
Um, the Graphic Gadget used to be in the mall, the Office Stop, not an owner. Lush Boutique, were they in the mall at that time?
They were.
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
And then uh, Full Swing, they're also in the mall. Twenty nineteen, when I haven't, I swear to God, I gave you money in twenty nineteen. I didn't? I'm ready to check the money. I am so mad. Oh my gosh, there's many things that have fallen off my docket this year. But you know, for twenty nineteen, Michael Shoes gave us some money, Pepsi Bottling. And and you know, the rest of them are are mall people, so...
How much do you need for, on an annual basis, what was?
Well, I think Janine's got to figure about three hundred dollars a month will pay...
Right now, they're clean, they will clean it because I quit cleaning it. They will do it for two hundred a month until we have funds. So if they don't know we have funds, they'd probably do it for two hundred plus. Plus, it's about eighty for all the...
You're roughly about four thousand on an annual basis. Do you want some to trickle over to the next year?
Yeah, and then, okay, so then if they...
And water and sewers are about...
The water is a big issue. You can see where the water bill is in there. You know, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred bucks a month.
I think water would be super hard for us to ban though because you guys are there in the mall and you know you're using it and you're seeing people go in it and and we're, none of us are there. And so if a toilet's running or a sink is running, there's nothing we can do about that. That's that's what's serious.
Well, we know that, but these, like Janine and these gals that are, they wash, you know, they they're in there a couple, three times a day, you know?
That's what I mean, you're there, so...
Yeah, so they they do a good job of watching that and the good thing is, the other thing is, I compliment the city about is your gal over here watches that water bill. And if that gets out of line, if there's something wrong, and just sometimes a stool runs and you don't know it, she calls us, which is very nice for her to do that. Because other than that, you know...
You know, that's happened to me too, and I I just wanna have that because I will compliment them as well. Because that helps to know that.
Well, yeah, I mean, same here, you know, we're not the... She sees that bill fifty or a hundred bucks higher than it was last month, she calls that.
Since this is a, you know, more of a downtown business issue too, I get I get what you're saying. You talk to anybody at the chamber or anything? Can I get that involved?
The chamber is, yeah, they they do a, they do everything also.
Okay.
So the chamber's very good with us.
There it is. You know, it's it's a little hard to make sure you get it right.
Actually, the chamber isn't giving us any money at all.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. They give a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month.
They do?
They they pay, they pay the taxes, they pay the...
I see, I see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's...
I guess I've never had that. I've never counted.
Chico, one...
The money goes to Chico.
How much was it?
A hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month.
Chico, what would you say you're getting consistently, reading through your um, handouts here? I agree in the consistent, sustainable funding mechanism. Um, I think we will need to talk about this. Uh, I see this as a, an asset that needs to be supported. I, whether people are walking downtown and using it or whatever, it brings people in and you're getting some exposure and I think that's really good too. And so what, okay, what are you getting consistently from, I know I talked to you, I said, the merchants need to hold up there in the bargain. That was a part of this when we, the city built the restrooms. But I know you can't force people. I know people are trying. There are people. What what are you consistently getting? What is your actual shortfall that you would need to keep this maintained? Everything that needs to be done?
Well, if we can keep the cleaning at two hundred, a hundred out this stage, it's eighty to a hundred bucks for the soap, paper and whatever. We're talking about a three hundred dollar a month deal plus the water bill. That would, don't you think, Janine, that would pretty well, if we can keep the cleaning at at the two hundred dollar a month, that will get us, yeah.
Are you, and are you still anticipating getting some money from the Lauras and the people who have been...
I I don't want, yeah, I I mean...
I, they, the merchants benefit from this.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, but they don't pay. But yeah, yeah.
Okay, I know that there was, I I'll I'll have to get it pulled out. There was a process that was set up for that. And you know, I I can't think of all the names off the top of my head, but I know that there was also supposed to be a committee and there were two, three or four names on that uh, that was supposed to meet to go and help you get all that done. And I don't know where they all are.
I think of, I mean, Janine and I, she's did a lot of, she's been doing the paperwork, bookwork, sending out the bills to all these folks. And you can just just keep dwindling, of course, things change and
Yeah, I can see.
You hit the same, not that we're, same story all the time, I get tired of hearing it, but you know, where's the city at, you know? That's what, not to rag with the city, because you, I know, but that's...
We're the ones that built it for you and...
Well, yeah, and you know, and hearing back with a handout again about it.
The taxpayers paid for it. I mean, that's that's where it came from.
Yeah, and it just, you know, we get, to give you an example of how this got started, I had a customer call my office and said, I'm not coming back to your town again. I said, well, why not? She said, I had my mother here and she had some issue and needed to use a restroom and it wasn't. Autumn, that's another way. That's how we started talking about building a restroom. You know, of course, the chamber had it. And that moved, you know, they paid for what it was paying at the end. Just in a pickle here, that's all.
Right. I think we all see value to the restroom at the mall, for sure. I appreciate the information you've given us, but I've gotta ask for a little bit more. Really, we need an idea of what your budget is for the year. And as Carol included too, then what's the shortfall? Just so we can understand, you you told us about cleaning and water and supplies. Sounds like you've got some repair and maintenance that needs to come in there and be funded also.
Well, again, Ron had been doing that, nothing, you know, and then if we have, buy some parts. Did I buy them or you bought, who bought them?
Well, I think Cindy at True Value donated, I I had to put some new parts in the stool.
Yeah, so we could sum that stuff up. Yes, if we could get maybe, I don't know, if we wanna build something up, maybe get four hundred dollars a month.
Well, this is our budgeting cycle and this is a great time for you to be here with and ask if you're gonna have one. Uh, I would just ask that if you could get some numbers together for us to give us an idea of what an annual budget for your operating costs and everything.
Well, it's other than the main building, if we could, I'm saying if we could, let's just say go four hundred, put a hundred in it for repair and maintenance.
Maintenance changes, all the...
Whatever. And the water bill, you know, I don't know if that's...
You're you're looking at six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, Chico, you're saying you would, you would need even some money, a buffer for reserve for to, for something, for an emergency. What would you, okay, knowing what you know and and not knowing the true cost because of Ron's, all his help and Janine, what would you say a reasonable amount from the city would be, but I believe, I believe we're a partner in this? And 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 I would still want the, this group to to also contribute.
I think it...
I understand you need, you need consistent money.
Probably if we could do some, so let's just say, the city does the water and four hundred dollars a month to build it. Now, if we had some other expenses,
Yeah, some breaks or...
we could probably go to some other, the downtown merchants and say, hey, I need twenty-five bucks instead of two hundred and fifty or something. I think, you know, we could, I think our...
What about going to the merchants for the water bill?
Do you have a separate checking account? Do you have a separate checking account when you're tending this? Okay, all right. So you could pretty well tell what you've spent in a year out of that account, right? Okay, that's in this, all right.
You never know. You got, maybe.
And how much was the water?
You never know how much it's gonna, because from month to month, it's something breaks.
Yeah, we don't know.
That's fine. I'd just like to know if if you can pinpoint the water bill for annually, and it might be in here.
It's in there. You got, you got three or four months of the water bill.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have this before the meeting.
That's okay.
Well, yeah, well, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I I think what we're gonna have, what we, what I'd like to see though is your hard figures, what your budget is. That way, we've got some justification. I mean, just to throw numbers around, I mean, I got a few loose pages here. But what are you running? Where's all your income coming from? So we, you've got a baseline where that is. There's something that we can supplement. But just to say, oh, I need four hundred dollars a month, I I, you're gonna be hard pressed to do that.
How soon?
I'm sorry?
How soon do you need it?
Uh, tonight or this afternoon or tomorrow, that's fine. I mean, it's, yeah.
I would say if you can get something to us in the next week or so would be early on.
I think that'd be with the group here, we could figure, you know, we don't wanna be asking more, but I I see it good a little bit.
I think a couple of items for clarity too would be to talk about the expenses we haven't talked about, taxes, insurance.
Right.
Those items that go into this, um, you know?
I paid that.
But but I think there's a broader question of, you know, we talk about chambers participating in this at the hundred and eighty-seven, how does that figure into?
That helps us. That's what they help do. Pay their, they call it a rent, which is fine.
You know, you say it's it's, get where your, where all your income's coming from and then your bills. We got everything together. Because I I don't see that the city's gonna do the whole thing, fund the whole thing. I think you're gonna have to have some commitments from outside. And if there's something on, you know, where there's a supplement that we have to do for a while, I can see where that could come about, but I I don't see us footing the whole bill. So you're asking us to go back to all these? No, no, no. I wanna know, we wanna know where, I wanna know what your income is. How much are you bringing in for this thing?
Now, we've got nut zero.
Right, but where was it coming from before? I mean, you had to know.
We got, we got a list.
All I've got is R and R rentals here for Storm Sewer. I got three of those. Uh, I got a...
Oh, hey, Ron, sorry, wait a minute.
I've got a... Oh, yeah, here, another one. No, I got the letter that you sent out. I have no numbers whatsoever. None, no figures.
That's that's where I was...
That's the one I was looking for.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought I had that in there.
No, sorry. Yeah, no, that wasn't in there. I just had the three bills.
That's how it started and then that's how it ended up.
Okay.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah. That that's what we're looking for. You, yeah, you, yeah, okay.
What's the hours of operation?
Mall opens at eight o'clock in the morning or seven. Cindy's there at seven thirty.
What's the hour? What do you open up? Some minutes?
The mall opens at eight and closes at five thirty?
Six.
Six.
The last door closes at six?
Just Laura.
Oh, there's more of them?
I bet we could get all the water bills.
You got some in there, huh?
Yeah, there's three in here, but...
Yeah, you guys can...
Okay.
Would they be separate? Do you know, the, would the his, his bathroom water bill would be a separate meter?
I think that his meter was installed separate for that, for that purpose, yeah.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if you know how many people use it a day. You know, if it's only twenty people or five hundred people, that's a big difference for us.
You never...
You you never have.
Depends on time of the year, if it's holiday or...
There's no record, the traffic that comes downtown.
Well, it depends if you have a function downtown with a bike and they're having a party in the parking lot and they're coming through the downtown.
Like the Centennial.
Yeah, the Centennial.
You could give, you could give us some type of rough number. I mean, I said fifty people to five hundred people, we have no clue how many people were using it.
What would be the difference, though? Really?
Hi?
It's a, it's something the city doesn't have a restroom downtown.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
We'll go through that and then we'll get back to you, Chico.
Yeah, if you got anything, if there's something that we didn't get in there, we can talk about not having that.
If there's something that we think there's something else, I'll, I'll let Mike get ahold of you. We get something figured out. So I think what we need to do is if we get a, get, you gotta get a budget formulated so we know where your income's coming, where your expenses are, and if there's a shortfall where we can be. But I think there needs to be a fair contribution from everybody. So...
What, what, what?
Yeah, I have a question on this.
Yeah.
Now we can make a part of our budget.
This is a jammer.
You know how much you spend.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks for listening.
Thanks, Chico.
As, as other contributions we made twenty nineteen to our decisions.
I wouldn't dispute that.
I know, but I guess, you know, from the businesses that I would like to see that they're gonna continue to contribute as they have.
But you can see how inconsistent and there are many businesses that aren't there now.
Right, right. And like, I know that there was a committee that was set up and maybe he did sign to get those individuals involved with who was supposed to do this from the very beginning, but I don't know if there's possible to do. There was a process set up and I know it's in the minutes from some of the meetings from the past.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I I'll, we'll find him, I'll get him, okay.
We'll get it figured out.
Thank you all for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the proclamation for national blood donor. And it states, whereas, as a way to honor blood donors who save millions of lives annually and to encourage donations during winter months, January was designated as National Blood Donor Month and whereas National Blood Donor Month continues to be an important annual event for blood centers and patients as winter blood shortages are common and whereas each day, the American Red Cross must collect thirteen thousand pints of blood from across the country to meet the needs of patients. Now, therefore, I, Eric P. Jensen, Mayor of the City of Carroll, due to my proclaiming January as National Blood Donor Month in Carroll, Iowa, and do urge the citizens of Carroll to support blood donations by now donating in local blood drives, not only in January, but all year long.
Okay, a few blood drives coming up, yeah?
Yes, please, Clay.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Life service blood drives are our blood centers coming to Carroll January twentieth at the United Methodist Church. January thirtieth, they have another drive at the graphic edge, and in February tenth, they have St. Anthony Hospital having a drive also. And they do a very good job of contacting people throughout the year, getting us all involved, uh, please do much handout, donate blood.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual financial statement audit, and Laura, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, our auditor, Jennifer Walcott, was planning to be here tonight. No, that's really. Okay, Jennifer Walcott, our our auditor was planning to be here tonight, but I received a email from her earlier today and she was not feeling well and thought it was in the best interest I get some our help here for her not to be here, so I will run through the auditor report, um, it was it was very typical audit, uh, no major items to discuss other than I can walk through kind of the setup of how it it flows. So first is on page five is the independent auditors' report and their opinion. The city do receive an unqualified opinion, which is the opinion that you do want to get. Uh, that basically states that the state, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, the respect of cash balance, financial position of the governmental activities, the business activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city. Moving forward to page nine starts what's called the management discussion and analysis. This is prepared by, uh, office staff and it discusses the major activities and changes that have occurred during our fiscal twenty nineteen and a little bit of an insight into the next year's budget information. To highlight, we do show that our receipts were up about forty to almost forty-three percent from last fiscal year, and that was largely due to the bonds that were issued for the libraries that he called remodeling projects and other parking group of projects that, uh, we issued in fiscal nineteen. Disbursements were also up about three point seven million from last year and the main reason, and this is very typical from audit year to audit year, the changes in the disbursements has to do with the amount of capital projects that we do, if one year's higher or lower than another year. The cash balance of the city's, yeah, make sure I say this correctly. Overall, our cash balance of all of our funds did go up roughly three and a half million dollars from the last year. However, the city does have plans for or a budget that we will be discussing starting next week, has plans for how the funds would be spent if those were not already encumbered by council taking action, but we had not paid for an item or upcoming projects. The management discussion analysis does go into more detail about the audit itself, but I'll let you guys read through that. Exhibit A, which starts on page twenty and twenty-one. It summarizes all the revenues and expenses by the major governmental activities and the business type activities, as well as what we call our general receipts, which would be like our property taxes, um, other city taxes, hotel hotel, watch and sales tax and other miscellaneous, uh, receipts. And summarizes this across the whole city financials. It does show that the the fund balances or the amount of cash on hand did go up about that three point five million that I just discussed. This is broken down between governmental activities and business type activities, so basically means if you're not a business type type activity, water, sewer, or stormwater, then automatically you're in the governmental activities. Going on to pages twenty-two, twenty-three, and then as well as, which is exhibit P, and then twenty-six and twenty-seven exhibit D writes down the governmental activities and the proprietary or the business type activities into the funds themselves. So if you wanna think of the information on a more fund level, it's broken down in those two exhibits. And then the rest of the reports, um, or the bulk of the remaining of the report is the notes of the financials to give you more information about, um, activities of the city, what the debt payments are to coming up in the future years, um, the pension plan, I person, the supervisor, please. Information. Um, risk management about the type of insurance that the city has, any pending litigation, uh, development agreements, subsequent activities that have occurred since the time of the audit. So this is, it goes into a lot more detail of everything that goes on in the city. The last bit of thing I would, um, counsel, have counsel take a look at would be what we call the schedule of findings and questioning costs, which begins on page seventy-eight. This is another requirement of a of a governmental audit or city audit that goes through different areas that auditors are required to look at, including our official depositories, our if we're within our certified budget, business related transaction, excess balances, and on and on. And it does go on, I mean, that's kind of one place to look, you know, if a city's doing good or bad in a certain particular area. Not necessarily something that's mentioning that it's a bad thing, but it's just that these are areas and things that the auditors are required to take a look at when they're doing their, uh, city's audit. Does anybody have any particular questions on something, I know Jennifer is available um, to if you if you have any particular questions on the audit that you wanna contact her directly, she would be willing to talk to you.
One thing I've never been clear on is, so we have three and a half million dollars here, i- is this gaining any kind of interest, anything, what is it?
All of our money's, yes, are in.
What kind of funds, I think all this extra money has some sort of, is in sort of some sort of fund that's gaining a modest.
Yes, all the money is in, um, the bank either in some type of a savings account or obviously we need some funds, a little bit of funds to pay bills day to day.
I understand, right.
And then we do have a number of CDs, about one or twelve CDs, um, that this the money's earning interest on.
Page sixty-four, very good. Maybe incidentally, but, uh, page four, you got me as mayor, put that one.
Hmm?
Right, yeah.
No, you don't. Page sixty-four?
Oh.
Four, four page four?
Well, you you're gonna be that way cause the audit can issue for this year. So congratulations, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Will that work, you did last year, Jerry?
Yeah, I know, that's my bad, I'm sorry.
I said something once, I remember that.
We'll scribble out your name and we'll put Laverne's name in there.
Well, Laura, when I scrolled through this, I didn't notice anything that really jumped out, so we need to pay attention. Everything looked pretty clean.
Yeah, we find something, I mean, obviously, we noticed, we've been very fortunate, yes, revenues have been, I mean, it has to be project type of thing, and so we're not seeing a downturn there. Um, but yes, if we are identifying or noticing some kind of issues difficulties, we'll definitely bring it to your attention.
Thank you, I think it looks like a wonderful job. Uh, I think you should be commended as well as you, Mr. Poggy, we were clear, diligent work in keeping the records of the city very accurate.
Well, awful, also city staff too, cause they they they're they have different parts that play in this whole process too.
And I was gonna say, I mean, Laura did an excellent job of, you know, especially those things you really concerned about on a financial basis of segregation duties and, you know, Laura had really put together a good process, but it's really staff too that, you know, followed through and and made sure that, you know, we we had good financial controls over it. So I commend Laura and her staff on that. Uh, one other comment I would add just for public, um, all of our finance data, we do put on our website, we'll get this posted tomorrow on our website. Uh, but you look at cityofcarroll.com slash finance, uh, you'll see all of our past audits, uh, with all of our financial data up there, so it's a good resource for people to access and kind of transparency of all our, uh, city financial documents.
So this one's not up there yet?
Not yet.
How many, how many, how many far back do we go later on, you know?
So we go, we have three or four up there, but it also has a direct link to the state auditor, which goes back, I think, ten years.
About that far.
Yeah, we'll see how far back they go, this would, this is not on the state auditor's website either, yeah, we'll get that submitted here probably within the next week.
I know you were starting to do these here, this is the last couple years, I didn't hardly be told, um.
Yep.
Okay. Just gotta be aware that the, when you're doing projects during the year, your year end balances are really conflicting.
Yes.
That's like, yeah. Cause it looked like we got a huge cash reserve, which we spent in here or something, right?
Yeah, that's the goods and bads about financial statements, but you have to cut off and do a reporting at some point, right? Cause your day to day operations and projects, they just keep going on.
But when you have like the library project, that really goes off good.
Yeah, cause you're sitting on funds that haven't been spent.
Yeah, and 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 to that point though, if I recall, it was under a million dollars of capital items that were not really completed in nineteen. I believe that was the number, so I I mean, think even in the end of the day, uh, we we did end up with surplus. Uh, and it was good ending, I mean, we don't wanna be holding any tax barrier dollars, um, and so we really take that into account, and when we do our budgeting, that becomes the basis uh, for the next year's budget, so like, you know, we have a plan to kind of spend those down, we're not always successful in that, but it's part of the budgeting process.
As we, and as we jump ahead a little bit, I guess we've got our budget books out, we'll be talking about that later. Um, just make sure we tell people where they can find copies of reviews as we go through the primary versions.
And again, that, I would, you know, you're taking my thunder, cause I'll talk about that later, but, um, and the budget book did get distributed today and within the next few days, we'll have an electronic version of that, again, will be on our city website, cityofcarroll.com slash finance, and all that financial data is in one spot.
And that, that's really tremendous, Mike, uh, we haven't always had that, it's great to have them all in one spot and keep talking about, and you can say that five or six more times today.
Absolutely.
Laverne, you can't forget that.
Uh, if there's no other discussion, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual financial statement audit.
So do. Second.
There's a motion in the second, there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bayes?
Yes.
Thank you. Tuck that down over on the spot, let's see. Back up here at the beginning, the next item on the agenda is the rezoning request from, uh, planning or planned unit development with the underlying zoning of R five high density residential district to R three low density residential district, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, um, the city did receive a request from Roman J. Stephens and Sons Construction, Inc., who is.
Oh, I see, I forgot they had open a public hearing, yeah, I knew it, my hills down here, so it is six o'clock and the public hearing is open, sorry, Mike.
No, no problem, we did receive that request to rezone a parcel of land located immediately east of Bellis Drive approximately five hundred and fifty feet west of Griffin Road and south immediately of the North Ridge Ford subdivision phase three. The rezoning itself contains five point four two acres of land. Uh, this property, to recall, uh, was rezoned on August sixth of twenty eighteen, um, was rezoned from R three low density residential to its current classification, planned unit development uh, with an underlying zoning of R five high density residential for the then proposed Carroll Hart apartments project. Uh, with that project now now moving forward, Mr. Stephens has requested rezon the pro- property back to R three low density residential district. I would note, uh, the property is identified in the twenty thirteen Carroll Conference of Plan as general business. Um, no public comments have been received from staff prior to tonight's public hearing. I would note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their December eleventh meeting. I know public comments were received by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend that the city council approve the proposed rezoning unanimously. Uh, so staff's recommendation is the city council consider approving a request, uh, the request to rezoning above the property from P E D planned unit development with the underlying zoning of R five high density residential to the R three low density residential. But with that in the happening, answering questions the council may have, so.
Low residential is like, single family homes and like, uh, two blocks?
Duet sizes would be permitted, um, this is also the same zoning that is, uh, to the property.
Okay.
And would be the same zoning to the property to the east that wasn't previously so.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, uh, any questions from the public, since I got a public hearing open, no? It is six oh two and we'll close the public hearing. With that, I need a motion to approve the zoning request from the planned unit development from high density to low density residential district. Yeah, need to approve the ordinance, yeah.
Well, you need to.
Well, we need to.
Number of reads, if you wanna waive all the three readings, or one, two, or three.
Yeah, I was gonna, whoever wanted to make the motion do that. I can't make the motion, I can ask for one, but, so there's, yeah, there'd be a three reading.
All three.
Waive all three.
Great question. Great question.
Yeah.
To waive all three readings?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion in the second, there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Cotts?
Yes.
Bayes?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the ordinance, second. It's Cotts and Haley, reverse in second.
Got it, yes. Okay, uh, you're ready to vote?
No other discussion, yeah, go ahead and vote on that too, please, thank you.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Bayes?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. The next item under ordinances is the Carroll City Ordinance, chapter forty point oh two amendment, disorderly upon the code, and I believe that was Brad.
Thank you, Mayor, back in September of last year, uh, the court struck down Iowa code section seven point three four subsection two um, by saying it was unconsciously vague on its face and unenforceable. The city of Carroll, Code of Ordinance forty point zero two subsection two is the exact language as the Iowa code. And also through the courts striking down the state code makes our city code unconsciously, unconstitutionally vague in its face and unenforceable. Uh, the police department had become aware of this and has stopped enforcing the code, but we need to take actions to remove that from our Code of Ordinances. I don't know if there's gonna be any discussion on it at the state legislature this year, but if there is, we'll come back to it at that point. Um, for the time being though, we should remove it from our code so that we do match, uh, the court ruling. So if there's any, not any questions, my suggestion would be, since the courts have already, um, removed this from the state code, that we need to waive all three readings and go ahead and prove our. So, if there's any, not any questions, my suggestion would be, since the courts have already, um, removed this from the state code, that we need to waive all three readings and go ahead and prove our amendment to this chapter also.
Yeah, I apologize, did we open a public hearing?
Uh, this one shouldn't need a public hearing.
This one didn't because we're changing ordinance already.
So this is number two our noise, right?
Correct.
So what about firecrackers?
The, so firecrackers, we follow the firecrackers ordinance as far as the use, um, as far as a disorderly conduct for the noise, probably not going to be able to enforce it under that code section.
It'll just be under the fireworks.
Fireworks code section, you're right.
So there will be a way for you to monitor this?
So since they are still illegal in the city of Carroll, we should be okay with that one. We just wouldn't be able to charge a disorderly charge, we'd charge a fireworks charge instead.
So this, would this be something like somebody driving downtown with their music going?
Typically, we, well, typically we find this, um, usually it has to do with an intoxicated subject or a fight taking place and where people are yelling and screaming outside of a residence or an apartment complex or something along those lines.
So this allows them then to yell and scream?
Unfortunately, I believe so.
Okay.
What about vehicles? Is that a different ordinance?
As, so as loud music, the city has a separate ordinance dealing with loud music from vehicles.
What about muffled noise?
Um, also a separate ordinance for that one.
Is there anything in here that we would be uncovered for that we should be concerned about?
People yelling and screaming in parking lots, things like that. We we do charge this code, we have in the past. Um, it's probably one of the more common charges of disorderly conduct. The, on the other side of it, it usually deals with intoxicated subject, which has its own code section also.
That one doesn't have any noise in it, they're yelling and screaming.
And for intoxication?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. You can't charge them for that, you just charge them for the intoxication.
For intoxication, yes. There's a little bit of a hindrance, um, I have not heard of any legislation for this next year, but I wouldn't be surprised if it does have some discussion at least.
What was the basis it was struck down on?
I don't recall the actual court's, uh, case. Um, they were saying that the the wording of it is is too vague and is not specific enough for, must have been for the charge of that case, which unfortunately, since it went to U S court, it, uh, it was completely struck down throughout the state.
So the code, oh, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
I see, the reason I asked questions, I had asked Mike over the weekend, I had a conversation with Brad and Dave on it. Just wanted to clarify, since eight A has virtually the exact same language, and we are okay with that because it's a funeral.
It is, well, I talked with, uh, Dave about that earlier today, and the belief is that since the court has now ruled against this one and this this code came apart in two thousand fifteen from state legislator, at this time it's still, it's still, uh, able to be used if needed. I think after this came about in two thousand fifteen, I don't know, at least publicly, if there's been any charges on this. This kind of came about with military funerals and and demonstrations against those, and since then, I don't know if we've had any that have caused any problems, so I don't know if this one's ever been tested in court or not, but at this time, uh, under the state attorney's recommendation, we do keep this one in place.
Hey, Mike, the the specific, uh, constitutional amendment that was referenced in the, in the court case was the fourteenth amendment due process. And it it's kind of a, it can be a good law, uh, law exam for law students, but anyway, uh, basically, the process claim says laws have to inform you and I of what is illegal, what, what activity is is prohibited. And the federal court decided, uh, you know, that that specific language, I mean, it was exactly the language we have in in our code. And it just said it's, it's too vague to to inform you and I that those activities are illegal. They, they, they really focused on, um, uh, a lot of, a lot of their focus was what's unreasonable distress. Uh, you know, that's, might be something that is, has a different definition to all of us in this room.
See, that's why I question that, eight A, it's virtually the same language.
Yeah, yeah. And-
I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure we're doing it.
And when Brad and I talk, there there is some additional language that they they place on, on that, uh, distress language. So it, I guess we wouldn't know until it would be challenged, but there is, there would be a chance that this could be salvaged from a, from a fourteenth amendment point of view.
And again, there was some research I did this morning also, after I talked with Brad, um, there was actually a U S Supreme Court case regarding this on the funeral component of it. It was actually in Nebraska, and after that court case went through, it's actually in Iowa and a number of states. And then, and this mirrors kind of that language that the U S Supreme Court basically said, if you follow these parameters, you're going to be basically in a safe zone.
Any other questions for Brad? If not, I will need a, uh, motion to waive all three readings, uh, for the ordinance amended from chapter four oh, forty point oh two of the city of Carroll ordinance.
Salute.
There's a motion in the second?
This is to waive all three readings, correct?
Yeah, I had mentioned that in that one. Uh, so no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then a new motion to adopt.
So, sorry.
There's a motion in the second, there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote please.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is resolutions. And, uh, the first item is the youth sports complex lighting field project twenty twenty. And we're going to open a public hearing on the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of con cost, and it is six twelve. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Eric. The plan specifications form of contract estimated cost for this, uh, youth sports field project was, uh, done by Shad Hattery out of, out of Des Moines. Uh, the plan specification form of contract estimate of cost are general, are described as, um, the plans basically removal of the old-looking wood, uh, telephone poles and the lights on fields four, six, and seven, and replace them with a metal structure, new lighting, new, um, wiring, a lot, probably a lot of new conduit, if some of it is in good enough shape, they might be able to leave that, but that would be up to the engineer to make those decisions, but basically, starting back at the boxes, um, utility boxes, it's all going to be new, um, are they new on fields four, six, and seven? And I do have a map that shows those fields right up there, um, when you look at the map, you might be thinking, why is that field four down to the very south, um, and it's field one and two now, we've created T-ball fields there. So it's one, two, three, four, five's up at top, and then six and seven, so four, six, and seven are the ones that will be lit. Um, the specification further detail the construction of the planned improvement specifications were done by Shad Hattery. Uh, form of contract is the standard A I A form that we see on a lot of projects. Estimated cost, construction of fields four and six, I had that wrong, but I'm missing this fields four and six, two hundred and eighty thousand, field seven would be an alternate bid, um, of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Engineering services, we get entered into this contract at twenty-five thousand five hundred for an estimated project cost of four hundred and forty thousand five hundred. Below that is the, uh, project budget, estimated, um, project cost, four hundred and forty thousand five hundred. The funds available, we budgeted, uh, previously three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We had issuance costs and things, but, uh, that's been recouped with interest for the money that had been sitting there. So Laura told me last week, we have approximately three hundred and eighty-six thousand available. If the bid comes in at four forty, um, we'd have a shortfall of fifty-three thousand five hundred, so we'll have a discussion, we open bids next Monday. And we'll have a discussion, um, we'll see where the bids coming, the true bid, um, the true project cost will be Monday when we open the bids. So, so we'll know more with that. Um, any questions?
Jack?
Yes.
Oh, uh, yeah, are you ready for questions, or are you going to keep going?
Uh, the last I would say is, you know, we did do it last year with a lot of scheduling, um, I don't say nightmares, but it took some scheduling um, to get this done. Uh, feel, we we need lights out there to run a program the the way we really want to, um. Hopefully, um, there's some things, maybe we're going to have some more playing out there this year than we've had in the past, we have, uh, this would be early spring. There's some things that are maybe going to happen that would really be exciting, and I'm open to move forward with, but that was all preliminary at this point, so. Um, I guess, yeah, I would open up for questions, and the reason why we were doing four and six, because those are on the same box. Seven and eight that have light, eight has lights, has metal poles, we're not doing anything with that, that comes off the same box for field seven and eight.
What, what field was it that Kemper was looking for?
Seven.
They were looking at seven?
Yep.
Yeah. And that's the one that doesn't have lights?
That has, uh, there are, these fields right now, I'll have lights, we're replacing the three, but we did do an alternate bid just in case, because we had three hundred and seventy-five thousand available, let's see where two bids are, you know, for two fields, and then add, the third one's an alternate, so if we don't have enough funding, um, we can at least do the two this year, and then look at doing the third one later. Um, if you ask me, if you ask Joel, anyone that's been with us, we really need four lit fields. So hopefully, hopefully it's a competitive bid, um, and we get, get some good bids.
Let me interject one thing, why would we do four and six in one and seven in a separate, four and six on the same wiring system? And seven is on a separate wiring system, so that was kind of a logical split of why we, we did the bids the way we did.
And why is eight fine?
They have the metal poles already.
Okay. Are you putting it at the same time, or?
It was the same time, we have wooden poles on the other one, and the bottoms are, I mean, if you out there, you'll see a pole right now that's leaning pretty bad. Um, it could be five, six years from now, we maybe need to look at rewiring to do field eight, there's not as much light, I know it's the other.
There's no pole than the wiring.
What's that?
It's more the pole itself than the wiring that's got to be, and you'll have to do the wiring because the poles are good.
Yeah. Both. Yeah, well, we want new wiring, new wiring too, um, Andy, our staff, is electrician, and came to me, basically, I've been electrician, so Jack. We, these are dangerous, I don't want to touch them, and it got to that point, so we need to really rewire, the wiring on field eight is better. Um, and the poles, and a lot of it, Jerry, is on the poles. That wiring there, the connection at that point, where field eight is a better box, and it's just a little bit better. Probably more, I wasn't here, but probably more, um, those were probably treated maybe a little bit better because it was the bigger field, anticipating more high school games, more, um, higher-end games being played on the grass field, it's grass field, it's irrigated, so they probably put more into that, if that makes sense? Again, this was in ninety-five, ninety-three, ninety-four, so.
I know it's been a lot, a long time since those have been up there, but I have to ask this, is there any value to the pole, to the lights that are there?
No.
To someone else? No?
Probably not, no.
You go to LEDs?
Yes, these are going to be a forty, fifty-year light fixture, and the amount of use, the electricity is going to be so much better. Um, if I get a call, Joel gets a call at twelve-thirty from the police, says the lights are on, we can turn them off from our phone. I don't have to go out there and pull them and do those things, we're, we have done that in the past. So, a lot more, you know, we can set it, so the lights turn on automatically at the same time, right now, we have to go over, push every pole, turn the lights on. So, a lot more safer, um, it'll save money, electricity-wise, and we won't have to touch them for thirty, forty, fifty years. Yeah, it'd be nice.
So who goes out there, you know, there was times last fall, I would drive home from, from Wayne, Nebraska, and I'd be rolling in at twelve, one o'clock, and those lights are on.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Do they just turn them on and nobody shuts them off?
Yeah, well, they won't shut them off, and police will call, a lot of times I go out.
Oh. Okay.
And flood them off, or turn them off.
Is that somebody that's using them, and?
Yeah, and and this will have another box, and it'll be locked, and it'll be, oh.
Okay, be like parking gear, I guess, to close it.
Yeah, well, that'd be all right. If I didn't have, I'd have drove in there and shut them off myself, yeah, when nobody's there.
You know, top of fields, we've had calls.
Okay.
So, we, yeah, and, you know, it's nice people out there using them.
Cause you know, high school baseball field, yeah.
Yeah, but shut the lights on.
Yeah.
And leave the bar door open.
Right.
So your funds are available, or what funds are they, what?
Well, we're at a lookout, we're at a lookout status.
I, dead issuance.
Dead issuance.
Yeah.
So we borrowed, it was part of other projects.
So that's a set amount already then?
Yes, we've already issued the debt, yes.
So if you have a shortfall, you're going to have to go from another.
Yes.
Or depending on how the bid's coming.
Yes, but if you have a fourth, you can't go over, you gotta find another fund now for that shortfall.
I'm looking at fifty-three five, and if it's still a shortfall, I bet those bids are pretty close.
My understanding is so that then we just do two of the fields instead of three, is that correct?
We had talked about that too, yeah.
I think you need to talk about that, because you wait, and you do another one, it's expensive to do the next one, you're late, it's not going to get much cheaper.
Yeah.
You gotta bring them all back.
Well, I guess we see how bids come in, like you said, Jack.
Figure it out from there. Uh, public hearing, is there any buddy from the public want to talk about it? It is six twenty-two, and we'll close the public hearing. And I need a motion to approve the, uh, adoption of the plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the youth sports complex field lighting project twenty twenty.
Salute.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the contract for professional services, Carroll Trails Plan Segment, uh, three, twenty twenty, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this, um, professional service agreement is with Shad Hattery, also, this is segment three, we have completed segment two. Uh, the only thing really with segment two is we'll probably have to, or the contractor will have to come back in the spring and reseed some areas along the golf course. Um, and out by the soccer fields, there'll be some irrigation, um, repairs that were damaged before, uh, during construction, so those small items, but basically, we are done with phase two, so our next phase would be phase three, um, which is going from East Twelfth up heading north to East Eighteenth Street, there is a map, um, that red section, um, the red line is uh, what we're proposing. The compensation, uh, total amount would be thirty-six thousand five hundred, and this is just for the design. Similar to phase two, we had a contract with them to do the design, and then we brought back, um, amendment to do the construction documents and those things, that's, that will be what we'll do with this project. Currently, so thirty-six thousand five hundred, the budget, uh, working with Laura last week, we looked this over, cash on hand currently, um, at phase two, we had a little over a million dollars, we spent about eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and eighty thousand. So, right now, cash on hand is a hundred and seventy thousand, hotel motel tax and local ops and sales tax. This next fiscal year, you'll see, in the budget books, uh, we're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the plan would be in fiscal year twenty-two to also commit two hundred and fifty thousand, for a total of six hundred and seventy thousand. Timeframe, construction is in June twenty twenty. Um, on that map, there are some discussions with landowners that we will need to have. So that discussion will happen March through December, the bidding, uh, bidding time- The bidding, uh, bidding time in January is a good time, uh, those contractors are looking for what they're gonna do the next year. So we're kind of right at the beginning, so we'll be one of the first projects for them, hopefully, in January of twenty twenty-one. Construction, April through July of twenty twenty-one and substantial completion, uh, August of twenty-one. So all the six hundred and seventy thousand, if the budgets are approved by you, um, all the money would be available, um, really July of two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, asking for, um, mayor and city council consideration approval of the contract for professional services with Shad Hattery, uh, Trails, Carroll Trails Plan Segment three, twenty twenty, for the design fees and the, uh, bid phase services for a total fee of thirty-six thousand five hundred.
Any questions for Jack?
I'm thinking way out of the box here, but if the rec center passes and we use both options, so it's like we're talking. Be okay using this amount here. Okay.
All I know is certainly to ask, and I'm gonna ask anyway. Um, notification process for adjacent homeowners, landowners throughout this will be dress free.
Yeah.
Societically?
Yes, yeah, because there are several houses in this area that they're, and other backyards, we won't be on their property. Um, yeah, well, especially though that there's a trail behind our house. Yes, no, probably maybe a public house, we will mail each one house, you know, notification, this is what's happening. Uh, we'd like to have a home house with you here for discussion.
I remember when we did that, several years ago, we had that back there and I know there were some people that, uh, lived on the backside of this that come for that meeting and I think one of them put up a fence so he could block it off already.
Just so we can get a part of it for guarantee.
Do it again, that this is comfortable.
This trail would be a ten foot wide trail, so you know that.
This was, this was the next connection from coming to
Yeah.
south from the schools.
Yeah, our parts work board, we did have a discussion of looking down south of town, um, trying to bring it up by the cemetery and that section, uh, water treatment plant, um, but we kind of met the staff and kind of talked about this. Thought we tried to bring it south, there's a lot of work, I mean, that cemetery, that's gonna, the grade there will be tough to really work. And, uh, where you do bridge work, where the creek is now, south of the water treatment plant, are you gonna leave that? So there's a lot of, a lot of things, I appreciate their, their thoughts and it, it's a good thought, you know? Because maybe didn't have land acquisition, trying to get land acquisition with that section.
I always see kids using it with their bikes going to school.
Yeah.
Out there that we have now.
It's crazy, I mean, there's so many people using those trails, I don't go by and don't see someone walking. Um, really impressed with even the, the soccer fields, baseball fields during the fall. People were saying, hey, my kids were participating and I walked out there. I've had requests for benches out there now, so we're gonna start looking, um, adding some benches out there in that area, so.
No, that, that's, that's a big boon for that area out there itself.
Heard me several times saying the number one activity in communities is running, biking, walking, so we're, we're really catering to that area of the trail system.
Are there any potential grants that we wouldn't, that aren't included in here that we could receive?
Yes.
Or apply for?
Yes.
And they're not mentioned on?
Yes. Well, we'll try, uh, read, and then there's another specific trail grant that we could get.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I need a motion to approve the contract for professional service agreement with Shad Hattery for the Carroll Trails Plan Segment three, twenty twenty, for the design phase services and bid phase services for a total fee of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Moved, second.
There's a motion and second, there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Cass?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And the next item, oh, this is Jack, thank you. Next item under reports is, uh, the three recumbent bikes with interactive display, report a bid opening, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In the current budget, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for this, um, purchase. On January seventh, twenty twenty-six bids were received at the time of the bid opening, Joel and Laura opened the bids for us that day. I had another meeting, um, we, we had six bids, three different businesses that submitted bids. Nova Fitness, Johnson Commercial Fitness and Foremost Fitness Group. Um, the bids ranged from ninety-four hundred to fourteen thousand seventy dollars. Uh, uh, we're very familiar with Cybex Matrix and True. Those are a lot of the equipment we have down there, the Intenza E-two, do not have a lot of information, but, um, Nova Fitness, we've done a lot of business with and, you know, they had recommended that as a different model. Um, Foremost Group Fitness does have the lowest bid, um, with either model. Overall, their two bikes were the lowest bid. Um, we would recommend the True C nine hundred, the, for ten thousand three hundred and fifty. That is more of a commercial bike than maybe a residential bike. It'll give a lot of, we, we're anticipating a lot of use on these bikes. And that True nine hundred is just a little bit sturdier, a little bit better bike that, um, can, can handle the extra use that we'll be putting out at the rec center. Other than that, um, there really wasn't much difference with those two bikes. So we would recommend, um, going with Foremost Fitness Group on a High Ridge, Missouri, the True C nine hundred at ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And I can answer any questions, um?
Hey, Jack, I, I see there's three screen options. I don't see the bid specifies which screen options can be.
With our bid, we had asked for a fourteen inch screen and all of them were sixteen inch. And that's, I mean, we sent very generic, but things that we really wanted, because we wanted to make sure many companies could bid on it as possible.
And C two, the C four hundred is still a commercial bike.
Yeah.
So the frame construction is the same, looks like the crank assembly is the only difference.
Right.
So I'm just wondering why we, why we need to go with the bigger one?
I was going off recommendation when, when I asked that question, um, they're not the use. This, I mean, this will constantly be used, um, either one would be fine.
Yeah, because we don't have much maintenance on our common bikes at this point, do we?
No, I, and we were talking about that this morning, um, pedals, some of those things. Every once in a while you get a machine that has the bad monitors or something, which we don't have a lot of. And that, that could happen in any room. I know Joel had one thing on the difference too.
The, the C nine hundred also comes with a larger seat, um, just another thing to consider. The, the crank system was different, as you mentioned, the, um, is it C four hundred, C three hundred? It's, it's a one-piece crank system where the C nine hundred is a three-piece crank system and that compares with the Matrix and Cybex machines, they're all a three-piece crank system. So I think it's what you see across the board as far as crank systems go and it has a slightly better seat. So that was kind of the, the reasoning for that.
I say, I see there's a weight difference, it looked to me like the one is probably about fourteen inches longer than, than the originals. That would count for certain, that weight difference.
High Ridge, Missouri, is down by St. Louis.
Yes.
Were we gonna have any worry about maintenance that far away compared to Clive Iowa or a thousand dollar more?
I did talk to her, uh, the salesperson of Foremost, that was one of my, um, questions. She, and she said she has a rep in Iowa, I believe it's Burlington, Davenport, over, it was over on the Missouri, Mississippi side. Um, that is probably a concern during warranty issues, you know, we won't have to pay, you know, for some of those items. But if we, if it's out of warranty, typically if we have to have someone come in and repair, you pay mileage and hours for them to get there.
So you're estimating, if I'm reading this right, the bikes for seven years?
Mm-hmm.
And the warranty is like one year, right?
Three.
Three year, all right, three years. I'm a little concerned about down by St. Louis, Missouri, or even Burlington, Iowa, or a thousand dollar difference to Clive Iowa.
Yeah.
Welcome to commercial bidding or government bidding? Those better, those better.
And again, there's not a lot of thing, there is any piece of equipment. We've had lemons down there, treadmills, whatever it was, um, we don't anticipate that. It's really any equipment, you can have it, and if, if we get one that needs a lot of repair, um, yeah, how quick is he coming over? I asked, he said he, they had said about seventy-two hours, or they could get over for sure. And to be fair, Nova and the, and the other ones, you know, they're, they're trying to find other jobs in the area. If they're gonna send over a rep, they wanna see if they have other things to do. Uh, so you could have a week, a machine down for a week before it gets repaired. One nice thing is we're gonna get three machines, so there's two others to use. Um, but Laverne, you're right, that's one of our, our concerns.
You're talking a thousand dollars for three machine difference. What's, you know, what's their mileage rate, you know, to come from Burlington?
Probably fifty, whatever, we come.
Actually, you have to go, do we have to go with number five? Or just three?
I mean, the, the council always has.
Do you, and I put that in the bids, the councils have the right to pick and choose whichever one they wanna go on.
I mean, you have the right to leave purchasing policy and make a decision based on what you think is, is the best option for the city. Um, and traditionally, we have went low bid, um, you know, and
But in the long run, this could be the low bid?
In the long run, it could be, in the long run, it may not, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's true, but also, you're gonna have them here in two to three or five hours or the next day to fix that machine instead of a week possibly, like Jack said, and now you're just taking a machine out of the public's hands. Who says they're gonna come that much quicker just because they're closer?
Yeah.
That's true. I mean, it's the reputation is what you'd wanna go by, I mean.
Yeah, and, and Nova, um, and Johnson, we, we've worked with both of them. And again, the Cybex, Matrix, True, all of them are in line, they're all about the same as far as quality and, and, and with that. Um, so, but if I called Nova, Joel or I called Nova Fitness and said, hey, we have a machine down, they put in a work order, it goes to their rep, they're looking, okay, do I need to come to Denison? Where, where am I going around that I can put Carol in to that down? And it can be a week to ten days, but then before they come to that machine.
Are there extended warranty options to these types of things or is that just cost prohibitive or?
I don't think so, I, I don't recall ever getting those offers. He, when you start doing that, you might as well look at a lease option then, a lot of them have lease options. Where you, where you lease it for more than what you'd spend here, but, you know, I have a lease option and they're coming out right away and you're buying that part of it.
Jack, um, are the, is the Matrix R seven X E the, the one? I, I was thinking the same thing as, as Laverne for a thousand more. Uh, I know we've done business in the past with, uh, the Clive and Omaha people. Uh, is, are they giving us a price on the latest model? I, when I looked at the eleven thousand, I went on their website and, and their, their website has six thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for one, um, you know, for one bike.
Yeah.
This model, are they quoting us the latest model or they, are we getting, you know?
Are we, are we getting two thousand nineteen's models or some?
Well, yeah, I was surprised at the, the price for one, it's, yeah, at almost seven thousand.
Right. There, there is some government funding that we do the better prices of some equipment. I'm not saying that's what this is, I wouldn't know careless, I went back and did a little bit more research and contacted them. Um, and I tell you, the, the big difference between the two matrices, which is significant, is the fourteen thousand dollar one is one, so Brad and I, we, Joel, we use that machine a lot. We can put our times in there, Brad can see what I ran or what I rode, I can, so we can kind of have that. We have espresso bikes down there that people really like that, that has that option. That's really the only difference and we, I think Joel and I both agree that we probably don't need that, that, uh, much of it with this type of bike, this isn't, I mean, the espresso bikes, those are the ones that are really trying to get their times down. These are more for longevity and timing and, and that, so I don't think we need that. But the R seven X E does basically everything else, so it.
Okay, so you're, you're not sure if this is the last, okay? Who, who have we mainly done, I, I remember doing business with the Clive people, Omaha. Who, who do we, who have we mainly depended on?
Those two.
Those two.
Yeah, and I believe, and I'm pretty sure Johnson Commercial bought out Second Wind. And so you might have remembered seeing Second Wind name, I believe, do you remember Joel, is that right? Yeah. So they've recently purchased, so they're a new company with us, but, um, they purchased Second Wind. And again, yeah, both are relatively close to us.
Do we have any experience with Foremost?
No. She, they are in Iowa, I think it's a newer company that's expanded into Iowa. And I did not call any references, but, um, I know she's said she's been in Cedar Rapids, Iowa City.
Yeah, yeah, their website, they say Des Moines, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
I don't know, I have concerns about the service versus the, um, High Ridge, Missouri also. I, it seems like we've established relationships with the other two businesses. Have we had any problems with either the Clive people or Omaha?
No.
I know for a thousand more, maybe that relationship is worth thinking about as far as having a good rapid response or them fitting us into their rotations or whatever they may be working on with the rec center also.
I'm concerned about the mileage charges.
Yeah.
If they're coming from the other side of the state, that, that worries me.
And typically, when, when we, we see some of that now, they have other jobs in the area. These two will definitely have other jobs in the area, um, that would be another concern. Um, but you, you know, if they have work to come over to Des Moines for, so we would split that, all that mileage and what funds is coming up?
General.
General.
All the bids came underneath what we have budgeted anyway, so. Um, have, have you been having any trouble with, did you have much trouble with the previous ones or is this, are these brand new? I mean, as far as?
Well, the current ones we have are seven, eight years old.
Have you had much trouble with them that you've had to have the reps come to do much with them?
Um, we haven't had much maintenance done on them, most of the issues come from the pedals, um, which are kind of just general maintenance with all of our bikes. And a lot of that, we, I've changed out plenty of pedals, we, I can order the part online and, and change it out. So, I, honestly, I, since I've been here, I haven't contacted anybody to do maintenance work on our current recumbent bikes. But they are probably three of our older pieces of equipment that are.
They also don't have a screen like this does either.
Right, right.
Which is more high tech.
Maybe people are all enjoying, not liking.
Generally speaking, they're really low maintenance items.
So maybe there's not a need to be worried about.
I don't think there is, that's, that's why I've been pushing it, that's, that's why I think four hundred's gonna be perfectly adequate.
I thought we were going with the C nine hundred.
That's the recommendation.
That was the recommended one.
I, I'm saying from my experience, I think four hundred's adequate. The, the weight capacity is the same, the foot pressure's the different, it's pedals and wets, that's the only difference between the two.
And a bigger seat? What's the seat?
Well, I, I don't say that on seat dimensions, there's a few more features on the seat, it's a molded seat versus whatever depends, more breathable. Well, I, I don't see any seat dimensions. There's a few more features on the seat. It's a molded seat versus whatever and it's more breathable. But the adjustments or anything else are the same on both.
What about the computer screen? Is that something that is, you know, some, we can't fix that ourselves?
No. That's usually being sent in and if it's bad enough, they replace. The screen. We've had to do that with the Espresso, one of the Espresso Bikes.
If they send in, does that mean we put it back, assemble it again ourselves?
No, they would swab and put it in.
What's that?
They would come out and put it in. Yeah, we wouldn't wanna do that ourselves.
And explain again, which one of the, you said one of these had a better screen? Did I misunderstand that?
That, that was between the two matrices.
Okay.
The Matrix is the top, higher model is one that we can compete against each other and see each other's ride times.
So I guess my, what I would look at too is if you haven't had that much maintenance, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be really predictable as to. How much if they're gonna come from Hyridge, Missouri, or Burlington, or Clive. That's not, that's not gonna be a predictable issue.
Yeah. It, it, we recommended based off pricing.
Right.
And the only other thing that I thought of after when I had some conversations was today, so if Nova Fitness is here, they're gonna go by and look at all their equipment. They're gonna see that. Where we really don't have anything else from Foremost or, uh, Second Wind, if they come up looking at the other equipment, they're, you know, they're, they're gonna check their equipment out before they leave. So there's one, there's something to be said for that, but again, we recommended the C nine hundred.
You have any other equipment from Foremost now?
No.
Nothing.
But you do have some.
We have some True.
True, okay.
True equipment and I'm sorry, I could have looked up who we had purchased that from before, but, um, apparently. It must not be an Iowa rep for True. When I went out and looked, I couldn't see anyone else. It was just them, so they purchased the Iowa, right, so.
But you do have equipment from Johnson?
Second Wind, yeah.
Which is a C.
Yeah, maybe we have Matrix, we have really Cybex, Matrix and True equipment and our own good stuff.
The True equipment that you had, have you had much trouble with those?
No.
No.
Hey Joel, just a quick question, um, the C four hundred, is it pretty comparable to what's already on the floor down there?
Yes.
So the C nine hundred is just a little bit stepped up a little bit?
Yeah, just a little.
So our people are used to the C four hundred.
The, the C, I mean, the, the biggest difference is gonna be that screen. Otherwise, the recumbent bike itself is gonna be very comparable.
And the C four hundred has kind of like the breathable back, you know, like you see, uh, you go in our, our office, you know, we have the breathable. So does that be one difference and like Joel mentioned, he thinks the C bottom isn't as wide or?
The nine hundred.
Yeah, the nine hundred. Just a better seat.
I was just wondering what our people are used to. I've been on it, but I can't remember.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're used to something that's close to the four hundred. Or do, is what we have in the rec closer to the nine hundred?
Um, like Mike said, they're, they're very comparable, so I think as far as transition from users, it's gonna be very comparable. Um, but my thought with the nine hundred was just that, that larger, I think the seat back is a little taller, um, so, and then it is breathable. Like it's been meant, like what's been mentioned and the crank system is the three-piece versus the one-piece.
So it's a, it's a mesh bag?
It's not a mesh bag. Uh, it's kind of hard to see from this picture, but there's a hole in the back of it that, um, towards the top.
That hole goes all the way through?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Whereas the four hundred isn't quite like that.
So the four hundred doesn't have a hole in the seat?
Does it make a picture of it quick?
Does nine hundred shows an optional armrest, the other does not? Does that, does that price include that, do you know? If he, um, it does?
Yeah.
I'm inclined to try to save the money this time. These are low maintenance items, so.
Would you like to make a motion, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm going to make a, as soon as I can read it. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the bid from Foremost Fitness Group for the purchase price of ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for three True C nine hundred bikes.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I see no second, so that one will die. Would someone like to make another motion?
Do we want to try one for the C, the True C four hundred, ninety-four hundred and fifty dollars?
Is that your motion?
Sure, I, I'd move to, to buy three True C four hundred recumbent bikes for nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for Foremost Fitness Group.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Steven?
No.
Faith?
Yes.
Dirk?
No.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Flusner?
Yes.
For two, approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I trust everyone's read the committee reports and I want to thank Jerry for, uh, graciously being mayor pro temp again for another year. Thanks, Laverne, for your past service. And are there any comments from the city council? Uh, you wanna talk about the blood thing again or are you good?
I think we got it covered.
Alright, any comments from the city manager?
I would note the budget book was distributed this evening for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, and our first, uh, budget workshop will be next Monday at five fifteen here at the council chambers. Uh, appreciate all the work that staff and Laura put in and putting this document together. It takes a lot of staff time, so I really appreciate hard work and our time put into it.
That's next Monday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And Wednesday.
And Wednesday?
Wednesday. Just there's, that's why.
Uh, anything else? If not, need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion and second, we'll go ahead and vote.
Flusner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Your turn.
Thank you.